All right. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining the Lewiston City Council for our workshop. And that's followed by a meeting later this evening. A few quick items regarding logistics. This session will be conducted remotely and council members will only participate electronically. For those viewing online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website. If you join this meeting using any other link, we suggest that you reconnect using the website that I just read, and it's also noted on the agenda. A public comment on any item apparent on the agenda will be sent to publiccomment@louisinmain.gov prior to or during the meeting, and all comments received would be forwarded to the city council. Members of the public who are logged into the meeting online can make comments when invited to do so by using the Raise Your Hand button in your lower center of your screen. Once you are acknowledged, the microphone will be unmuted, and you will be invited to make a brief comment. Councillors are also asked to raise their hands to make comments. With that said, we'll go right into Item A, Discussion of the City Charter Review Committee, and we've given about forty-five minutes for that, and Dennis will lead us through that. I'm sorry, City Administrator Dennis Dotte will lead us through that.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, City Councillors. As the mayor stated, tonight we'll talk about the city charter process. In your city charter, our city charter, excuse me, Section 8.09 calls for a periodic charter review in calendar years ending in one. So 2021 does trigger a committee review. And I want to start by just distinguishing between a committee and city, or excuse me, charter commission, because there is a difference, and it's important that we make note of that. So this charter calls for a committee review. And this review is conducted, and I'm going to walk through a timeline that was in your packets that we'll go through here in a minute, in terms of the appointment of that and of that committee. But ultimately, the committee would be making recommendations to the city council in terms of potential changes. Depending on the nature of those changes, in whether, I guess, we'll go with major versus minor changes. If we're talking minor changes that are clarification edits, maybe clerical in nature, and they're very small, that's something the committee can recommend, and then ultimately, the council has the option of sending that out to the voters just to approve those changes on a minor level. If they're major changes, and the only example that I'm going to use, and I'm not suggesting by any means that we would go there, but it's something we hear often of staggered terms for elected officials. It's just something that seems to come up whenever charters are talked about, so I'll use that as an example. That is a major change, and that would require a charter commission instead of just a committee. But what we'll do is I'll walk through this a little bit further, but I just wanted to make that really clear in terms of committee versus commission, because again, the process is slightly different and does require a little bit more on the commission side if we had to go that route. So starting in January this year would be our, you know, we're having this workshop tonight to discuss the process and begin to work through that. In February, our timeline would call for the mayor to advertise, or us to advertise, for the committee appointments, and the mayor to make those appointments per the charter. These are mayor appointments of seven members to a committee to review our charter. The charter review process would basically be, after the appointments occur, get the committee established. We're looking at basically March through June of 2021. The basic process would involve a very comprehensive review, section by section of our city charter, going through all of it, seeking input from the public, stakeholder input, establishing a process for boards and committees to have an opportunity. We would have legal opinions, and that's, the legal opinion would really be critical in terms of, again, determining some of those major and minor, I guess, changes that are being recommended as they're coming through. We would seek that opinion on those, because we want to make sure that we're establishing the right process after those recommendations go forward in terms of that. And again, a legal opinion would be critical there. City administration would provide support to this committee. So that would be myself and Deputy City Administrator, as needed, would just work with the committee and provide that support. Once the committee has gotten to that point, around July 2021 is what we project, they would be ready to issue their final report and recommendations to the city council. And if, depending on if this was just the committee, again, no commission is needed, and they're minor in that sense, you know, we would go August 2021 would hold a public hearing on the changes. September 2021, we'd be looking to get the final wording to the city clerk to order the ballots for the November election. October 2021 absentee ballots would be available, and then November 2021 would be the actual election, and adopted changes would go into effect thirty days after that election. Going back to July, if, when we receive these recommendations and the legal opinions, and we conclude that some of these would require some changes being recommended by this committee is major enough that we would require a charter commission, then I likely would see that your November election would involve actually electing the charter commission members, and then a following election would need to be determined on the next available election to adopt the final language that the charter commission would be bringing forward. So essentially, the charter commission would be starting, if this were to go that route, they'd be starting with a slate of recommendations that would be coming from the committee, but they would have their own work to do as well regarding that, and then bring it forward to the council, and again, ultimately getting it back on a ballot for official vote by the referendum by the public. That's really the basic process, you know, for us to be able to get started on this. And tonight, what I envisioned or was hoping that we could do was obviously have some dialogue, answer any questions that you have around the process and what I just discussed there. But also, if there's items, as I mentioned, as an example, the staggered terms, but if there's areas of the charter that the council would like us to, you know, start the committee off on, areas or even suggested ads or edits, I'm perfectly fine with taking that this evening, and that would just really give some initial feedback to the committee from the city council. I think it's also important to note that these would be public meetings. They would be open, again, I want to go back to that. I think it's important that we have public comment and input through this process. We would be building that in, but this isn't also your only one opportunity as well as the city councillors. I wanted to be clear with that. This is our first discussion on it. But if there's other items and things, those can be sent to the city administration office and get to the committee. However, we can, we'll work out some mechanisms there for that to happen, but just want to make that clear. This isn't your only bite at this apple in terms of being able to provide some feedback and input on that. I guess I'll stop at this point, and maybe, Mayor, maybe open it up for questions and comments, and we can go from there.
Let me, so if I could, let me ask you this, and I may have asked you this, and I just can't recall the answer, but if several councillors tonight make recommendations of areas that they would like to see, but they're a major, at a major level, change, is there a time that we would go straight to a charter commission and bypass a committee?
You know, that would be something that, I suppose, I would want to get a legal opinion on that, I think, to start. If we have any obligation to at least meet the committee requirement that's in the charter. So I guess the question would be, do we have to have this committee and then quickly move to a commission? Or could we just bypass the committee step and go right straight to a charter commission? So I would want it, I would just want that opinion, I think, just before. And I think that was kind of our feeling here tonight, was be able to get a sense of what types of changes, immediate changes are being asked for, which should set some direction in terms of the process. But then, obviously, the committee will also go through some of that process as well, and may end up needing that same legal opinion depending on the items that they identify and the recommendations that come forward, if that makes, did that answer your question, Mayor?
It did. It sounds to me like charter dictates, so to waiver from that would, we'd have to get a legal opinion, and I'm not sure I'd want to do that, but it sounds like we have, we really should go through the committee process first.
That'd be my, that's my inclination at this point, that, again, according to the charter, we start there, and then really state law around charter commissions, and that also dictates the process on how we establish a charter commission, and would have to go through that process. Where it gets a little, and this is, you know, speaking with previous city administrator, others that have been through this process, there isn't great definition out there of that major versus minor changes and recommendations. It just isn't. And it really does require every bit of advice and going, others that have been through this, is get the legal opinion on the items you're looking at. Because ultimately, that's really the recommendations, having them look at those and determining that from a legal standpoint on the appropriate, if we have to follow state law under the commission portion, or if we'd be able to just handle it here. I think we just need to look at what's actually being recommended, and that would be our best, most efficient way to get the legal opinion.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Councillor Ray?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, City Administrator Dotte, for that overview. I definitely did not realize the difference between review committee and commission, so that's incredibly helpful baseline to have. So rapid-fire questions. The seven members of the mayor's appointments, do they have to be representative of the wards in any way, or is it just whomever is deemed capable and necessary by the mayor?
So the specific, to answer that question, the specific language in the charter says, "The seven members who shall be residents of the city and who the mayor determines to have a background in or understanding of city government and its operations." That's really the only criteria.
Great.
If I could add to that, Councillor Ray, I will be open to suggestions from the council. So if wards are important, I think, myself, I was thinking more demographically would be important for me, but I'm open to suggestions as we work through this process.
Okay, that's super helpful. Thank you to both of you for that. And then I just did a quick run-through of it, but is the school budget referendum date within charter?
You know, I'm going to see if the city clerk maybe knows that.
Right, Dennis, it's not specifically in charter, but the timeframe of the budget adoption is in charter. So therefore, we always keep the election on a Tuesday, just for consistency. And then, timing-wise, councillor, it's always been the second Tuesday of May, just to allow that timeframe, because the charter does say that the budget shall be adopted by May 31st. So even though that, that actual election day isn't built in there, everything else kind of forces it into that timeframe.
And so my subsequent kind of recommendation or thought, and of course, it would need to be worked on, is I think we have incredibly low turnout for that referendum, and it's usually a standalone vote. It's the only thing you really vote on that day, and so I advocate for moving it to when the state holds its primary elections, because there are often, even if you're not registered to one of the parties and have a ballot for candidates, you have other bond issues, you have other questions that come up during that election. So that's one recommendation. Another that has irked me for all of time is, under each forfeiture of office, the fact that if you were charged with a crime and you have to spend a year in jail, it has to be of a sexual nature or of dishonesty or fraud, I believe is the phrase. Seems like, possibly be a bit more broad with that layer of stringency for our elected officials and appointed officials. I think, yeah, that's incredibly specific. So looking at that, it falls under a couple of the offices. And then, this will be a fun one to propose, but I would really recommend that we start looking at running, moving away from the mayoral runoff model to a ranked choice voting model. In, I think it was 2016 and 2018, Lewiston voted with margins of victory in favor of RCD at the other levels, and so it would be interesting to explore if that's something we should do within the city, since the members of the city have already voted for it. I realize that's not a hugely popular opinion, but I think it's worth considering to not have, again, the turnout issues. I think if we could just give City Clerk's Office two elections to run a year, that seems like plenty, so trying to squish these things down. And then the last suggestion that I have been thinking about a lot is how the wards are appropriated and movement within the wards. I realize this is not a problem everyone has, but as we think about the next generation running for office, their millennials and Gen Zs are way more likely to live in apartments than in investing in houses. When I served on the council, I was in that situation. I know some of my colleagues now are in that situation, and trying to find an apartment that is the right price and is safe for you and your situation within a ward after already been, being elected, it can be tough sometimes. So having a conversation, again, I don't know what the outcome of each of these points might be, but I think it's worth a conversation. If you're elected in the spot, do you need to stay there for the two years, especially under trying circumstances where you still want to serve your community?
Okay, thank you. Any response from staff on that at this point?
You know, just quickly, I think these are, this is great feedback, and I think this is exactly what I think will be helpful for the committee, you know, to start their work and understanding that this is some direction. So this is just good, good examples of what feedback is that we're looking for, so thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just since Councillor Ray gave me, kind of got my train rolling here, I would completely agree about maybe changing the budget timeline. I know from our experience on the school committee, along with yourself, Mr. Mayor, it's a pretty frustrating process, and it kind of makes more sense if we could push that final vote date to June. Makes all the sense in the world, so I'd personally like to see that happen. Also agree that it makes way more sense to just have ranked choice voting in Lewiston municipal elections than to have an additional election for runoff election, like right after, when you could literally just take care of it in that first election. So it's, you know, save city money, save a lot of time, save a lot of effort by a lot of people. Makes sense. So, yeah, I would definitely agree with that, and I definitely agree with the sentiments. I have a suggestion kind of along the lines of what Counselor Ray was talking about. And I got to say, as a young person, it is tough, because when you live in an apartment in Lewiston, and the ward boundaries are kind of warpy, you could move the next street over and be in a different ward. And I know it's been tough for me, you know, serving in my fifth year in office right now. I've had times where I've, you know, been like in situations where I had to move, and it was like crunch time, it was like, okay, am I going to be able to stay with my grandmother for a few days without the rest of the council or school committee, you know, raising an issue about that? Am I going to have to literally sleep in my car? I wish I didn't have to have those conversations, but honestly, I did. And so it's tough being young and serving in office, because if you don't own a home, you're not settled anywhere. You always run the risk of having to move, especially if you're young and you're not especially financially stable. So it's tough. So I guess to segue from that to something else, I'd personally like to see an at-large councillor position added. That way, someone wouldn't have to be restricted to ward boundaries. I'm kind of debating in my mind, just my own thinking, of whether we should reduce ourselves to six wards and then have two at-large councillors. I'm not there yet, but that's something I'm considering. But I'm definitely there for adding at least an at-large council position, because the system we have now makes it really hard for young people to get on the council and stay on the council without making a whole lot of sacrifices. And so just taking away the limitation of being in a certain ward, honestly, would be a huge difference for getting more young voices on the council and people who don't necessarily have, like, own a house, per se. So I have a few other things on the list here. I've been holding onto this list since about 2015. I know I had a conversation with you, Mr. Mayor, on a park bench in Kennedy Park, I think 2014 or 15, about some of these issues. So a lot of time to marinate on them. So, quick housekeeping change, change all fees today is 2021. That's just, you know, a technical thing. I'd like to redefine what publish means, to include internet sources, so not just rely on print publication to meet requirements. And I'm not sure what state law has to say about that, if that could be changed. But the idea that, like, we have to put something in the paper at a certain time, it's 2021. I think every millennial just looks at that and goes, what? What? So, yeah, redefine what publish means. So I guess it is kind of recent. So when the council president becomes mayor, personally, I would like to see that council seat filled again, and then a council president chosen after that, which is not the way we have now. Doesn't happen too often, but like, for example, when Mayor Cludier ascended from council presidency to mayor, the council seat wasn't filled, and so they were short a councillor. And so, of course, Mayor Cludier stepped in and voted, and, you know, to make it a seven, you know, seven votes. But it would have done the city better to, I think, have a councillor in that seat, even for the remainder of that term. So personally, that's something that I'd like to see changed. More of us at the table can, you know, we can just get more done. And that's just a few other things I'm debating, but I definitely want to see staggered terms for the council. To me, that means changing the term limits to four years. And then every two years, you would have half the council and then half the school committee. And then whatever wards voted on council this year and school committee this year, they're essentially swamped. So everybody, like, you're not going to have certain wards that won't have anything to vote on, or just for one, like, the mayoral vote or the at-large councillor, school committee vote. So they'll still have a slew of candidates to vote for. Plus, having less candidates on the ballot at a given time is going to give those candidates more, more time with the press, more time to speak with people. It'll muddle their races a little bit less. And I think that's going to serve the city well. Something I'm just kind of debating, and I'm definitely not there yet, but do we want to have the mayor's race at the same time as the council? Because when we have mayor's races, that's all the media focuses on, and us council candidates, it's really hard to get a say in about anything. Not that there's anything against mayoral candidates, it's just the system we have. And I'm not quite there yet, but that's something I'm considering. So those are kind of the thoughts that I have, and to me, I would definitely be in favor of a charter commission, and it seems like we're going to have to end up there with some of the things that I'd like to see. But I know this is a process, and I appreciate everyone's thoughts, too. And if anyone has any questions or concerns about this, my fellow colleagues or anyone in the public watching this, feel free to call in and talk to me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jumping in with Councillor Ray, one thing on the forfeiture of office, perhaps wording could be added, something like conviction of any crime of moral turpitude. I think that opens it up quite a bit broader. I can't see that you have to be committing a felony or a crime of a sexual nature. Crime of moral turpitude, as defined, would certainly cause one to, or should cause one to be considered for forfeiture, perhaps that's by vote of the council upon conviction. And the other thing, I don't know where, where is it determined what the ward boundaries are, by whom and how?
Madam Clark?
Yes, thank you. So we have an elections ordinance in our code of ordinances. I think off the top of my head, it's Chapter 32, but we can double-check on that for you. But the ward boundaries are defined in there, and the ward boundaries are done based upon the census records. So of course, the census is done every ten years, in the year ending in zero, and then the state does their reapportionment for their district lines, and then the county does their reapportionment for their district lines, and then we do ours last on the municipal level. We do ours last. So ours are typically done every ten years in the year ending in four. So we are looking at another couple of years before we redo the lines under the requirement in the charter. But that, Councillor Clement, is defined in a separate election ordinance, which is on the web, but I can also send you the link as well.
Okay, would this, is this something that requires, I say, council approval, once we filter down to that level?
Yes.
Who gets the final say?
The city council. So what we do, and I don't want to, I don't want to take a lot of time, but we will take a look at where the lines are for the state districts and where the lines are for the county districts. And then what we do is we take a look at the existing city ward lines, and then we look at the population shifts. And we try to keep the core of each existing ward in its integrity, in its entirety. And then we just take the street lines, the street boundary lines, and try to move it out a couple blocks or in a couple blocks to get to that balance of the population. And the charter does require that all city wards have the same amount of occupants. It can have a differential of, gosh, maybe five percent, I don't remember offhand, but there is some sort of variable where you can have a little higher, a little lower, but for the most part, they need to remain the same, which is why when we do it, we move the lines out just maybe a block or two, or in a block or two, depending upon the population growth from the census. The question, of course, that we're already having, and I don't know the answer, is there were some issues regarding the census that just ended this past year. I think Mayors only had a fifty percent response rate and return rate for their census. So I don't know how that's going to be all flushed out, but obviously, other governmental agencies will be handling that on the federal and state level, and we'll just find out those answers in a couple of years.
Okay. Thank you.
All set. Councillor Clement?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Khalid?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with what Councillor Ray and Councillor Jensen have said. I want to highlight more of the ranked choice voting. That's something that I'm very supportive of, and I hope to see that not only for the municipal elections, but also for the presidential election. I think Portland may have done that this cycle, but also, instead of, I think, I think our elections should be the same cycle as the president's, so four years. So that's something that I highly recommend. And the other one was, when I was, when I initially read the charter, I think I read, like, the mayor being referred to as he. So I hope I can see more gender-inclusive language throughout the charter. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ray?
One more buried in my notes. I believe there's a requirement that to serve an elected office, you have to be twenty years of age or older, so you can vote in elections two years before you can run for them in Lewiston. I would suggest bringing those in line with each other. It just seems like such an arbitrary year. Can't drink, but you can vote on the city budget, I guess. So just one other, I don't know if that's substantive or not for folks, but it seems worth discussing.
Okay, Councillor Khalid, I just want to make sure I understood. One of your comments was talking about the presidential election. Are you suggesting that council terms are four years or every four years?
Every four years.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure. Yeah, go ahead.
I'll go ahead, and I think just, this is great. I mean, I really appreciate the feedback from the city council, and I think it's, so what I, to answer your question better now, I think, Mayor, what I think would be appropriate, based on what I'm hearing for a list here, would be for us to have that legal opinion on the periodic charter review committee, and whether or not we would be able to move past that and go straight to a commission. Obviously, there is some significant, even the example I used was tossed out in terms of staggered terms. And there's several, and there's some minor. I think the best example is Councillor Khalid's, you know, more gender-inclusive language. That's, that's an edit that I don't think would require a full charter commission. That's really getting things current, right, and getting them updated and that. But, so I think that's fairly straightforward in that. But obviously, forfeiture of office language, even, I think that that's significant enough. We, you know, would probably require a commission, ranked choice voting of any sort, whether it be all our elections or just on the mayoral runoff that I heard some support on, would require a charter commission. I know that for certain, as well as, you know, those, again, those are major ones. But, so I, what I just wanted to add that, I guess, to our process. My next step would be to take this, I will certainly take this and summarize these for the attorney, our city attorney, and say, this is our basic dialogue that we've had, and get some direction in terms of that commission, and again, on 8.09 on our charter, whether or not that applies, and we're able to bypass that. And then I'd be able to provide that as an update to all of you.
And so I think I'm going to make a recommendation that maybe on that specific, because I think we're going to be stuck. I think the more I read that paragraph, I think we're obligated to go to a committee first, but, you know, I may just to hear what the attorney might think. But maybe there could be a change in that, so that it allows the council to do either or, go to a committee or go directly to a commission. Because there are times, I think, Auburn, kind of when they were doing theirs, they just decided that we're not looking for major change, we just want to do minor grammatical changes. So I think it'd be good that the council had that choice. Councillor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, like, I did not realize the review committee was different from a commission. So I'm curious, so it sounds like the charter commission would be elected by the electorate of the city of Lewiston. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And where, is that like state law that refers us to that? Okay, because I And where, is that like state law that refers us to that? Okay, because I was like, it kind of stops right here. Okay, interesting. Okay, thank you so much.
Can we send the state law to the council? Just so everybody has, I think it's law, right, in general? Is there a lot in that?
Oh, yes. Yeah, we could certainly send the lake, though, and, yeah, I believe there's three different sections around the charter commission. But we could certainly send all of it so they have the full.
All right, thank you. Counselor Khalid.
Thank you, Mayor. Dennis, quick question. We don't have for counselors, we don't have term limits, correct?
Correct.
So that's something that I would add to the list.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion or suggestions? Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't have it in this list of notes, and I'm not sure we necessarily need a charter amendment for it. But personally, I'd like to see the mayor become a full-time position. So if we can put it in the charter, maybe that's what we should do. If not, we'll maybe put it in the budget for next time, but I'd like to see that happen.
You couldn't have chose that a couple of years ago?
Sorry.
It, I mean, I'm not convinced it's a full-time position, but it is definitely more than a part-time position at times.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may too, you're putting in so much work and for the pay you're getting, it's, you're putting in a lot of work. So to me, it makes sense. If you could do this full-time, you'd be able to even more. So it makes sense for the city for that to happen.
I think it's worth the discussion. And I, you know, I think many mayors have put in long, a lot of hours. I'm not the first, and I'm sure there are some that will easily beat me. All right, thank you. Counselor Ray.
Just in response to Counselor Jensen, I do wonder, I think compensation based on the charter is set by ordinance. And so the council could take up a different compensation measure for the mayor, I think, going forward. I don't think it needs to, it might, but I don't think it needs to be preserved in charter that it's a part-time position. But I think setting a different level of pay might indicate that, if that follows for other folks.
All right, I know this is a workshop, but there are a couple of attendees. And I'd like to at least, you know, because I really think we should hear from the public too about suggestions on the charter. You know, if we have a further discussion when we return, maybe we should make sure that folks know that they would be invited. But I would like to just kind of switch over to the public, just to see if anyone, anyone from the public would like to make a comment in reference, specific to the discussion around the charter. Okay, I'm not seeing any.
No hands are raised, Mayor.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so our, our city council meeting will start at seven. But before we move from the workshop to a recess, is there any other comments or suggestions from either staff or councils? Counselor Ray.
So City Administrator Dotay, now that we rained on your planned parade, what would be a new timeline, I guess?
Well, I think that'll depend on, and you didn't rain on my parade. This is exactly what I needed, honestly. It's very helpful to get a sense from the city council where they're, what they're looking to see. I think what I would say is, I will get you an updated timeline. I think once we're able to get a little clarity now from the attorney, I think it's a great question for the mayor about, you know, how obligated are we to meet eight point zero nine of the charter? Is there an option for us to go right to the commission? Because clearly, these would, you know, that. So once I get that, then I can give, you know, an update. Because to the mayor's point, I read the same way he does. Language is pretty clear. It doesn't give us a whole lot of wiggle room from what I see in terms of establishing this committee and at least having a review. So it may very well be, you know, this committee still, the timeline still needs to happen. The committee still needs to come forward, and then we're just going to have to do a charter commission following that. You know, following that process. But I'll get that, and then I'll get an updated timeline based on the legal opinion we get on that particular section.
Okay. And then, Mr. Mayor, I'm curious if, so if best-laid plans had happened, that would have been a mayoral appointment. How, let me ask this, what level of involvement do you foresee the council and the mayor having in that process if we inevitably end up in the charter commission space? I think it's a little different than the review committee. So I'm just curious if you had thoughts on that or reflections.
So I'm not sure I quite understand what you're asking.
So I think if you were the one choosing the charter review folks, that would help set kind of a direction. And I think that would be a relationship between you and those members. If we're in a charter commission space, what does that look like to you, is my question?
So it's like any elected official, basically, people would run for off, for the Office of Charter Commissioner, right? Kathy, just, I'm sorry, Madam Clark. Yeah.
That's my understanding, yes. I have not looked at the statutes for the commission, but yes, that's my understanding. That's how it was handled when the county was looking at doing the county charter. And we had an election for county commissioners for their, for their charter. So yes, they would pull nomination papers, we would have an election, they would be elected, and then they would receive their charge and their timeline from there.
Okay, that, that helps answer. Sorry, I was thinking there was more of a relationship between the two, but that helps clarify that.
I think, I think law basically really tries to take it out of elected officials' hands and makes it a people's body. And I think, just like any elected official, you have to convince the public that you have enough knowledge to, you know, to serve that in that capacity. So I think this, you know, there's almost debates and other things when it comes to commissions sometimes.
Okay, I can, I appreciate that. And I think our level of familiarity with it is high. And so I think that's why we're coming forward with these ideas and things we want to see discussed. But that's a helpful ideal to center it. So thanks.
Anything else, councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll end our workshop, and we'll see everybody in about twenty minutes for our council meeting. Thank you.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. I think everybody's back. Just a couple of quick reminders for the public. If you've joined this meeting using any other website address other than www.louisstonmain.gov/2021cc, we encourage you to log back in using that site. So if anyone shared a link with you, it's really important that you log in separately so that we can separate you from the other person that might have shared that link. Also, public comment on any item appearing on the agenda may be sent to public comment@louisstonmain.gov prior to or during the meeting and all comments received will be forwarded to the city, to the city council. Members of the public who are logged into the meeting online to make comments were invited to do so by raising your hand button in the lower center of your screen. Once you're acknowledged, your mic will be unmuted and we just ask that you make sure you're unmuted on your end. With that said, City Administrator Dotay, are you going to provide the COVID update?
Yes, Mayor. Just very briefly. We have, again, we continue with our staggered work schedules in maintaining operations and services best of our ability under those schedules. The major update that I would say is we are working with the state right now to identify vaccine locations. There is vaccine clinics that they're looking to establish. So right now I'm working with them to vet those out. We have a number of locations throughout the city that will offer them in hopes of getting one established right here in Lewiston in the near future. So stay tuned on that. I will obviously provide an update to the city council. Once I have a little bit more clarity at this point, we're just in the vetting stage and identifying options. And that's really all I had for the COVID update tonight.
Thank you. We have no minutes this evening to approve, so we'll move right to the public comment period. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. Separate from the agenda items. So we'll have public comments for every agenda item, but if this is something that's not on the agenda, you have three minutes to make public comment and I'll switch over to the public side. So if anyone attended the meeting tonight would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll for attendance and then announce the roll call vote.
We're a councillor from Word 1. Present. Word 2.
Here.
Word 3.
Present.
Word 4.
Present.
Word 5.
Present.
Word 6.
Present.
And word 7.
Present.
Thank you. Also present this evening is Mayor Kayer as well as Deputy, I'm sorry, City Administrator Dennis Dotay, Finance Director Heather Hunter and myself as the City Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And then roll call votes will begin with Word 4.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Agenda item number one, please.
Item number one, appointment to the Voter Registration Appeals Board. Requested action to appoint Edward A. Barrett as chairperson of the Voter Registration Appeals Board for a four-year term, said term to fill an existing vacancy and to expire April 1st, 2024.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Moved by Councillor Ray and seconded by Councillor Jelinus. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay. Any presentation, Madam Clerk, or is it pretty self-explanatory?
Happy to answer questions if you have any questions.
Okay. Seeing none from the council to the public. And back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Councillor from Word 4.
Yes.
Word 5.
Yes.
Word 6.
Yes.
Word 7.
Yes.
Word 1.
Yes.
Word 2.
Yes.
And word 3.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number 2, please.
Item number 2, order authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at 28 Montello Street. Requested action to approve the order authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at 28 Montello Street.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councillor Joy, seconded by Councillor Clement. Heather, anything you'd like to add?
No, it's the standard quitclaim deed that we take before council on a routine basis.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? To the public. Back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Councillor from Word 4.
Yes.
Word 5.
Yes.
Word 6.
Yes.
Word 7.
Yes.
Word 1.
Yes.
Word 2.
Yes.
And word 3.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number 3, please.
Item number 3, public hearing and final passage to amend the land use code and zoning map for a conditional rezoning request from community business to highway business for the shopping plaza owned by Shopping Plaza Associates LLC located at 1035 Lisbon Street and 191 South Avenue in order to allow warehousing and self-storage. Requested action to approve final passage to amend the land use code and zoning map for a conditional rezoning request from community business to highway business for the shopping plaza owned by Shopping Plaza Associates LLC located at 1035 Lisbon Street and 191 South Avenue to allow warehousing and self-storage. So moved.
Second.
Okay, Councillor Ray, did you move that? Councillor Jelinus, thank you. And then seconded by Councillor Clement. And I see Director Hediger is not in the meeting, but Doug Green is. Do we need to bring him in?
Want a brief overview of the item? Certainly Doug can be brought in to do that.
Yeah, very brief.
Sure. Matt, can you bring in? There we go.
Deputy Director Green, thank you for attending. If you could just give us a real brief review of this.
Sure. The owners of the shopping plaza wanted to expand an existing building's use of self-storage and warehousing at the property at 1035 Lisbon Street. And in order to expand into the front of this building, the earned zone community bid does not allow self-storage or warehousing. So their request is a conditional zoning just to allow the warehousing and self-storage use on this property that would change the zoning to highway business. And the planning board voted unanimously to support this and be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Questions or comments from the council? To the public? Back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Councillor from Word 4.
Yes.
Word 5.
Yes.
Word 6.
Yes.
Word 7.
Yes.
Word 1.
Yes.
Word 2.
Yes.
Word 3.
Yes.
And word 4. Oh, I'm sorry. We ready to report. Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
All right. Thank you. Agenda item number 4, please.
Item number 4, resolve authorizing the transfer of $150,000 from the AL Airport Terminal Parking Lot Project to fund the East Ramp Reconstruction Project. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing the transfer of $150,000 from the AL Airport Terminal Parking Lot Project to fund the East Ramp Reconstruction Project. So moved.
Second.
It moved by Councillor Ray, seconded by Councillor Clement, and we'll have a brief presentation by Finance Director Hunter.
Certainly. The information was enclosed in your packet. The airport had a parking, the terminal parking lot project in an LCIP that was authorized a few years ago. Due to the bids, they've tried redesigning it a couple of different times and still the bids are cost prohibitive to what was approved for the project budget. So they have not been able to complete that project. They've since changed the priority of that project and you will notice in FY '22, they've extended that out over a three-year period. I think it's a year like 3 through 5 or 2 through 4. In lieu of that project, they are looking at having a shovel-ready project so they can qualify for additional FAA funds. This money will allow for the engineering to be completed. The City of Auburn is voting on this transfer as well tonight. This will enable the Airport Board This will enable the airport board on their Thursday meeting to approve the contract to pursue and continue the engineering project for a shovel-ready project to start with this construction season.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none to the public. And back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Councillor from word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
Word seven.
Yes.
Word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
And word three.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number five, please.
Item number five, resolve condemning acts of violence and insurrection in the District of Columbia on January 6th, 2021. Requested action to approve the resolve condemning the acts of violence and insurrection demonstrated on January 6th, 2021 and commit the city to upholding democratic institutions and governing by example.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, moved. Okay, moved by Councillor Ray, seconded by Councillor Khalid. And I'll I was going to turn it over to Councillor Ray for introduction first, and then we'll go to questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I brought this forward through the process that I followed was having the idea for this resolve, conferring with the mayor and taking some of his very salient points into consideration and then moving this forward with city staff to begin the process of putting the resolve on an agenda. I wasn't quite sure there should be a workshop on it, but have had some good conversations with different councillors and wanted to provide some additional reasoning behind this. I think, or I know, every person who cast their vote in Lewiston in the November 2020 presidential election, no matter who that vote was for, went through our Lewiston City Clerk's office. And the incredibly diligent work of not just the city clerk, but also the police department and the public works department to make sure this was a fair and free election and also a safe one in the middle of a global pandemic. I have to recognize that that those elections and those results came through Lewiston, went up to the Secretary of State and then were forwarded on to the Electoral College and then on to Congress. And so you know, our actions on one day and many preceding days in November for this election fed up into this moment. And so it does feel personal, it does feel local to me. It also reflected on the fact that we have upcoming elections this year in November for all of our seats and all of the school committee seats and possibly also a charter commission now. And in this resolve, I am hoping we commit ourselves to the cooperative transfer of power in case any of us run and do not end up in these seats again, which would be a real shame because I do believe the mayor always says this is a really good council and I do believe that. Additionally, the US Capitol is our Capitol collectively. No matter who's the president, no matter who's in Congress, they, the duly elected officials, work for us the same way we all work for our constituents in Lewiston. And in order to continue to respect that, I felt it was important to say something. And I'll leave it at that for other folks to weigh in and I'm happy to try to answer questions for folks as well.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've talked with Councillor Ray regarding this resolution and I just want the rest of my colleagues to know where I'm coming from. First of all, I don't know why we at this level are engaging in this activity as I'm not sure. It is our duty or function to inject ourselves into a federal matter. But given the sentiments surrounding the occurrences of January 6th, I'll put that aside. I'm not sure if we should be using the term insurrection. Being somewhat of a semanticist and one who has more than a mild association with governance and especially law enforcement, I feel that the use of the word insurrection should only come about after a legal proceeding such as an indictment or adjudication. I'm not 100% sure that anyone has proven proven to have committed acts that rise to the legal level of insurrection, treason or sedition, but as popular use of the term insurrection, especially by the media, factually correct or not, has become so commonplace as to be thought of as a synonym for conduct of a less culpable nature, I'll put that aside as well. To see our nation's capital filled with armed troops and surrounded by fencing and razor wire sends a very ominous message to all seeing it. The situation we find ourselves in is not the fault of any one-person party or ideology. There's certainly blame enough to go around full circle and be all-inclusive. Perhaps the time has come for all sides to be deprogrammed and return to that era when we more commonly got along despite our differences. What I cannot and will not condone is the use of force and violence to achieve one's goals or objectives. Certainly those involved in participating in such acts on January 6th or at any other time, past, present or future, should be roundly condemned by all loyal Americans and soundly prosecuted under the appropriate statutes. I believe I know where Councillor Ray is coming from here. I can accept the sentiment involved in this resolution and will most likely vote to pass. At this time, however, I would like to offer a friendly amendment by adding a phrase to the resolving clause as follows. Strike the final and replace it with a comma, remove the period at the end, insert the word and and add the phrase "the rule of law", period, full stop. So it will read, "We, the Lewiston City Council, condemn the acts of violence and insurrection occurring on January 6th, 2021 and commit the city to upholding the democratic institutions, governing by example and the rule of law." Thank you.
Would accept that friendly amendment?
You would. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Councillor Patengill.
I wasn't originally planning on speaking, but I just wanted to say everything Councillor Clement said was beautiful and poetic and 100% on point. I can't add anything better to the conversation than he so eloquently put. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my preference for be for us to table this. So I guess for immediately going into a vote, I guess I'm not in the position I want to be right now because I'd personally like to table a motion. So kind of waiting to see what happens. I know it's going to go to public comment, so I'm preserving some of my comments for later.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Jelineus.
Thank you, Mayor. So Councillor Ray, you and I have not had a chance to chat about this and you know, I have read this over and over again and thank you for putting this together. I want to sort of preface what I'm going to say with, by no means am I condoning what happened on January 6th. But as I think about this resolve, you know, I'm always trying to come at a sort of an apolitical avenue. And I think about like some of the sentiments that were expressed just yesterday by Martin Luther, all the stuff that we saw regarding Martin Luther King and some of his language and about, you know, peace and not hatred and not division. And while I think it's really important to do a resolve, I'm not saying that I'm not, again, I'm not saying I'm against it. I just, I'm trying to get my head wrapped around, you know, some of the whereses, like it's really about what happened and the concern about the voting and the concern about the transition of of power from the president and some of those things. I mean, for me, when I look at this, I think about condemning all acts of violence. So not just acts of violence that happened on this particular day, but really sort of collectively. And so I'm just trying to understand, you're really specifically just talking about that day. Am I correct in saying that, Councillor Ray?
All right, Mr. Mayor, if I respond?
Yes, please.
Okay, just trying to follow the rules. So I specifically am referencing that day due to its unprecedented historical nature and the, in the hopes that we never see that again on that level nor on our level. I mean, in talking with my folks who are a generation or so older than I am, they certainly never expected to see that at that level. But you know, if it can happen there, who's to say it couldn't happen at our local level as well, which is a hard thing to think about.
Thank you for that response. I just, you know, I'm just trying to get at this from a less political angle, I guess is what I'm trying to say, but I understand where you're coming from now. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Councillor Joy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to echo Councillor Clement and Patengill. I agree with them. I think it was well-put, Councillor Clement. And I would go along with the friendly amendment if that's the direction we'd be going into. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from councillors? We'll switch it over to public comment and come back to the council. Councillor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's curious to hear the word political signed with this because it is a political process and the certifying of votes. It is the rule of law to borrow a phrase from Councillor Clement on this. And each of these whereses are actually true. I, in speaking with the mayor, and I hope it's okay to reference this, this is a softened language that is intentionally not political because of that concern. And I want to acknowledge Councillor Jelineus's feeling on that. And this was an effort to position the city of Lewiston in the conversation. I think there are, I probably could have put more whereses in there, but this is what came forward and I feel reflects the sentiment accurately.
And I would like to just, you know, Councillor Ray did reach out to me before she presented this to the council and administration. There was, you know, an area that I felt would really create a more neutral resolve and Councillor Ray was very quick to say that, you know, she agreed with that. So I just, yeah, I just wanted to add to that conversation because it's been brought up a couple of times that I've had conversations with her. I appreciate her reaching out to me. Councillor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to concur what you just said, I've had conversations with Councillor Ray. Certainly in the beginning, this could have been labeled as a more partisan activity. It has been neutralized significantly from what it was originally propounded. I think the intention, given the resolving clause here, yeah, it does mention January 6th, but I think it commits us to condemning anything that occurs of this level. I mean, as I said earlier, to see when you look at television, you see military vehicles, armed troops, whether or not they've got ammunition in them or not, they're still armed troops. You've got razor wire surrounding the Capitol. That's just horrendous. That should not be in America. We should condemn anything that brings us to this point. Be it here in Lewiston, be it in Washington DC, be it up in Woodup Pitloch somewhere. I don't care where it occurs. We should be against it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see any other hands raised for councillors and we have two hands raised in the public. So if we could bring in Melissa Dunn. Hi, Melissa.
Hi.
Hi there. Three minutes and you're welcome to address the council.
My name is Melissa Dunn. I'm a community organizer. My address is 254 Blake Street in Lewiston and I'm being targeted by supremacists because on April 15th, I sent an email to the city of Lewiston and the Lewiston Police to inform them that Main for Mainers group in Facebook who was headed by Tom Kowazinski, who is a supremacist and known in the town of Jackman where he was fired as town council, was heading this group and they had posted a global call to action to reject stay-at-home orders originally set for April 12th. Now, this is huge because this comes from nationalist neo-Nazi and Klan. This group here particularly named Lewiston as a potential place to target, as a place to hold a rally and they mentioned concerning language of a fight. So that is why I notified the city of Lewiston and the Lewiston Police Department. I also called for them to act to be prepared and to do preparedness. Now, on April 15th, when I sent that email, I told them this is a global call to action. We were going to start seeing them on media nationally. And later that morning, we saw Michigan Proud Boys. On April 17th, Trump did his Twitter Nazi rally cry calling for three states to liberate, including Minnesota, Virginia and Michigan. Since then, I've reported that the Lewiston Police Department and Lewiston Fire Department were wearing no masks entering residences and community. People reporting in communities, they've been in public spaces, even stores without mask.
Excuse me, Ms. Dunn, we just got to make sure we stick to comments in reference to this result.
I know, I know. But Mark, Mark, you, please make an exception. You, you guys have kept me and kept me silenced on this issue and the people of Lewiston deserve to know. The history of supremacy here, listen, listen, Mark, the history of supremacy here.
Okay, Ms. Dunn, I muted you briefly and you're using your time and I understand your passion. I really do. And you do have a voice. We have a public comment at the start of a meeting. So I'm going to unmute you shortly, but it really needs to be in reference to the resolve that the council is considering. All right, so I'm unmuting you, Ms. Dunn. Can somebody else? I think you might have to unmute yourself on your end now. Okay, I think, Ms. Dunn, you're welcome to unmute yourself again.
Hello?
Hi, thank you. So really, but we need to stick to the resolve at this point.
I, that's what I'm trying to get at. The history of supremacy written has to be in that resolve because the people of Lewiston deserve and need to know. Healthy Neighborhoods was targeted by supremacists. And I know it's because we were on the map for April 15th. It's in text. It's in text and I sent it to you guys. It has to be written in that resolution. The Lewiston people need to know because right now they're hearing it's only about politics and it is not. We have been literally reeled in by legit supremacists to reject stay-at-home orders, including anti-mask to carry out eugenics and genocide. People are intentionally infiltrating.
Ms. Dunn. Okay. So I apologize, Ms. Dunn. A couple of things, you really are going off subject and and we're going to move to the next public comment at this point. Okay, Chris Bean, please.
Can you hear me now?
I can, Chris. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not used to this technology. Thank you, Mayor Care and members of the city council. My name is Chris Bean. My wife, Jolene, and I live at 990 Pond Road in Lewiston. Both of us wholeheartedly support the resolution that Councillor Ray has put forth condemning the June, the January 6th assault on the Capitol Building while members of Congress were fulfilling their duty to certify the votes of the Electoral College. We agree with all the provisions of her proposal. This attack of January 6th was more than just an act of vandalism or trespassing on public property or the disruption of public business. In our opinion, it was a direct assault upon our democracy, the Constitution, and yes, the rule of law. We believe it was a body blow against the United States of America. It will take many years to recover from and it impacts all of us at every level of government. We also believe it was an act of war against our nation. We don't use the term sedition or treason lightly, but what the perpetrators did, the perpetrators of this riot did on June, on January 6th certainly fits the definition of treason as spelled out in the US Constitution. Right now, law enforcement officials are conducting a massive investigation of this outrageous attack. We hope it is thorough and comprehensive and the criminals are brought to justice. But we believe something else. But we believe something else should be done. We urge individual citizens and public officials. To speak out against this unspeakable crime as Counselor Ray is doing with her resolution. If the city Lewiston City Council passes this measure, there's a good chance that the enactment. Will inspire other citizens and other communities to take a stand against similar attacks on the nation. For that reason, we urge adoption of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. If we could bring in. Mr. Collins. Hi, Mr. Collins.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you very much. And you're all set to speak to the council.
All right. My name is Kieran Madurus Collins. I live at one fifty-five Lisbon Street in Lewiston, and I want to commend Counselor Ray for introducing this resolution. I think the plain text should be heartily supported by any American and I. I shudder to think that anything in this resolution would be considered political. A basic underlying respect for our democracy and our rule of laws is at the foundation of our free society. And it shouldn't be any big trick for anybody in the city council to vote supportive of this. I think it will send a strong message to not only our community, but to the whole state that Lewiston stands for. Democracy and for the rule of law. And I strongly encourage everyone in the council to support the resolution.
Thank you very much. And we'll bring it back to the council now. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, I still stick with my original, what I said before, my preference would be for us to table this. I'll tell you my opinions on this in just a second, but it's just a lot that we're doing, a lot that we have yet to do in the council, a lot of things that we have in our goals list that we haven't really touched yet. So I'd rather work on that than something like this and just for people that are living in Lewiston that are struggling, whether it's financially, personally. There's just bigger issues for us to deal with. And so seeing us take on something like this, it's probably a little disheartening for them. I don't fault any counselor for putting forward a resolution. I absolutely don't. I think it's good to advocate for what you believe in. I put some ideas myself that other counselors didn't want to take hold, and that's totally okay. So I don't fault any counselor for that. I guess just preferably whatever process is used to come up with the agendas. Maybe that could change a little bit and so. I don't really know where I'm going with that, but I guess I'm just not too happy that this made it to the agenda. I'm hearing about it on Thursday, too. So my preference is to table it. I just feel like we have too much we have to do in the city. This is just milking up kind of what we're doing anyways. We're watering it down. And so my preference would be to table it. And then adding, I guess, the little part about the rule of law. I mean, I get it. It's easy to say, you know, people should follow the law. Don't break the law. Be good to your fellow person. Of course, but the idea that just like, it's literally a day after Martin Luther King Junior Day, a guy who stood for civil disobedience. Who stood for fighting against unjust laws, just because something's a law doesn't mean you should follow it. And just because people are breaking the law doesn't necessarily mean that they're unjustified. If the plight and the oppression that they're going through is enough. Yeah, people are gonna act out and break the law. And so I guess I'm just a little hesitant to add in a comment about like strict rule of law needs to be followed all the time. Day after Martin Luther King Junior. Because civil disobedience is good for the country. It's how we may change. Martin Luther King Junior was arrested multiple times for doing illegal things that shouldn't have been illegal. So I guess I have some some issues with that. Like my take on it, honestly, you can check my Twitter feed. I'm very, very, very appalled at what happened in DC on the sixth. I completely agree with everything in the resolution. Personally, I I'd put it, make it go further. I'm okay calling. The insurrectionists, insurrectionists, they brought a Confederate flag into the Capitol. They they not only killed a cop, they tried to kill more police officers. Came in with zip ties. That was not just some some protest gone bad. That was people literally trying, actually killing people. Law enforcement officials. So it was appalling. It was awful. And so for us to say as a council that, you know, we oppose that, to me, it's obviously, of course we do. I just don't feel like there's anything good that's gonna come from this. Who are we influencing with this decision here? Who needs to make a decision and and what we're gonna, you know, if we pass this, we would influence that. I get that getting a message out as a city is important and other resolutions have been good for us. Like the the gender equality amendment, equal rights amendment for the main constitution. Sending out a resolution for that, something I fully support because we as a city could have a lot of say on that. I know, um, like Rick Lashapell, Tom Peters, talked to us a few months ago about supporting a resolution to support changes. Like related to boarding houses at the state level. That's something that we could actually impact and 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 do a resolution about and it would be productive. But I just don't think anyone's gonna look at this resolution and say, you know, oh, Lewiston is standing up for this, just changes my opinion on it. It's just, it's not a good use of our time here. And like being, you know, serving in office for my fifth year now, it's just, there's so many things that can sidetrack us. That I just like, I want to be focused on what we need to do for Lewiston right now. And so, well, I I agree with with the message of the resolution. I don't disagree with it whatsoever. I just don't think it's appropriate us for us as a council to. Take it up right now. So I'm kind of in a position where I agree with in the resolution. I do agree with it. I'm not opposed to it and I want to make that clear. I just don't think that we as a city should even be voting on it or spending time as much time as we have on it. Because even now, like how many people are talking in the city about, oh, the city council now they're doing this instead of doing this, this, it doesn't matter what we do tonight, even if we drop it. The damage is already done. So I'm in a position now where if we have to call a vote on it, I I just agree with what's in it. I do. I just don't think we should be voting on it. So. If is a vote for it, I'll probably vote in favor of it. My preference is to table it and just not vote on it. I'm not gonna vote against it. Politics stinks these days because you have to make decisions like this and where if I vote no, then everyone's gonna say, oh, you agree, you're a Trump supporter, you agree with what happened. And I obviously don't. But then if I vote for it, the other side is gonna label me and everything and. Why, why are we doing this as a city? I guess I'm just frustrated. So I'd be open to table it. I don't think it's gonna happen, but those are my thoughts.
Okay. All right, well, it would require a motion to table and I would just ask if if that's something you're gonna do. We have two councils with hands raised. I'd like to hear from them. And then it'll be your option to throw out a motion to table and see where that goes. Okay? All right, thank you. Counselor Khalid.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I hope we're not, maybe I heard it wrong, but I hope we're not comparing MLK to what happened. At the, at the attacks that happened at the Capitol. And second, people are saying, you know, reaffirming Lewiston's commitment to democracy is unnecessary, but this is a great time when the. But when a time, you know, the president is actively attacking and undermining our democracy, this affirmation is badly needed. I I thank Counsel Ray for bringing this forward and I hope the rest of the council can unanimously support it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Khalid. Counselor Joy.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where do we stand with the friendly amendment?
So that was that was proposed and accepted by Counselor Ray, so no further action.
I'm I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from counselors? Counselor Jensen, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. We have a motion on the table to table. And is there a second? Okay, see and no, no second and no further comments from the council. Call the roll, please.
Sure, Counselor from word four.
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
And word three?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Gender item number six.
Reports and updates.
Counselor Ray.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The school committee will be meeting next Monday. It's been a little while for us since the MLK Day holiday. We would have had a meeting yesterday, but did not. So the agenda is not out yet, so I'm not sure what's happening, but if folks see that and have any questions, please feel free to reach out.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Ray, in reference to school committee, I I I'm assuming you're gonna share the discussion on the charter commission. Review committee with them and then maybe put in a request to administration or or any school committee members. If they'd like to submit comments to our city administrator.
Sure, similar to what we did tonight, you think?
I think so, yeah. Give them an opportunity to make suggestions directly related to the schools, of course, but.
Sure, I'll probably attach the video workshop from earlier, just so any easily answered questions are included. Happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to let you know, we had our first finance committee meeting a week ago. Your new appointment to there attended his first meeting. We're already into the LCIP. We'll be working on that again this coming Monday, meeting at five thirty, and we hope to have some very good deliberation on that. We wish to thank Finance Director Hunter for her presentation, which I passed on to members of the committee in an email. And I've gotten a couple of very positive comments about that presentation. So again, that was well received and. It's a a good building block for us to use to start. We look to have a successful and I hope it's a successful this year as it was last. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports or updates? Gender item number seven.
Better number seven, any other business counselors or others may have relating to Lewiston City Government.
Counselor Ray.
So this came up in a couple of conversations recently, but wanted to make sure it got out there about having a council retreat in a safe way. And also to echo Counselor Jensen's remarks from earlier revisiting those goals, I took a look at them tonight and. Blast from the past, pretty much. So it would be great to be in conversation and community around those again.
So city administrator and I actually spoke tonight, so I was kind of bringing that up in other business, so thank you for doing that. And I think the council will be pleasantly surprised when we see the list of what we've actually done on goals this year. Considering some of the things that we faced as a council. So I'll I'll throw this out there. I mean, do you think a four hour retreat on a weekend or a couple hours on evening? I guess I want to gauge from the council on what they would hope for, because I do believe we probably should just have an annual review of. Goals at this point, but I'd like to hear your thoughts on what you foresee that being. Counselor Jensen, do you have a thought on that?
Yeah, I guess maybe like just a few hours on like a Saturday or something wouldn't be bad, just for us to touch base. And I know I've talked with you about it before, but just the the full digital remote way that we've been, you know, doing things, it's not been the easiest. Yeah, for business, so. Yeah, I mean, just just getting a chance to like talk out, you know, out of a meeting setting per se and just kind of touch base with each other, I think would be good. So a few hours on like a Saturday, I think would be good.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jelinez.
Yeah, I would agree. I think if I remember correctly, last year we did it like a Saturday morning. And that worked out pretty well because I think it's rugged to do a whole bunch of hours after a workday. When you were talking about a safe way, Alicia, when you were asking about, I mean, Counselor Ray, when you're talking about a a safe way, were you thinking in person? Just spread out or are you thinking of another virtual thing like this?
I I think that's up for interpretation with what folks are comfortable with at this point. I know prior to the meeting, Counselor Clement and I were talking about vaccines and and the slow rollout, so. It depends on the timing and what level of comfort everyone has. And I think comfort also including Counselor Jensen's remarks that. Digital might not work, too.
Okay, administrative do today, is there any way we could do it in person safely or within CDC guidelines?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can. We're not going to have a large crowd there. We certainly with our group, the city council, maybe some myself and. Potentially some other key staff, you know, depending on the subjects and agenda that we have, would keep us under the limits and requirements of doing a face to face. Then we have a couple of facilities that we would be able to spread out to meet all the 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 guidelines. Armory comes to mind. You know, something like that where we'd really be able to space out if need be. So what I would suggest is. You know, similar to the request that I had received about trying to get us back to face to face council meetings. We go through a process, we'll go through some vetting of of locations and options. I I think, you know, it sounds, I'm getting a sentiment that it, you know, face to face may be preferable if we could do it safely and and get in there. So I think we'll look for that and then if obviously virtual would be an option if we just can't really find. A safe way of doing it face to face, but I think we can do that. Certainly, we can bet through. We have enough, a couple of options I think we can look at.
Okay, so I would encourage if there's any counselor that does not feel comfortable having a face to face. I would just ask that you reach out to the city administrative to share your thoughts. But otherwise, we'll we'll work towards, you know, having a face to face. And boy, I'm actually, I'm looking forward to that because we probably had three or four face to face for our entire. Council so far, so it'll be nice to see everybody in in a room from twenty-five feet away, probably. All right, any any other business related to Lewiston City Government, Counselor Ray?
I keep going. I know that Dr. Purim Woodier has been sending these to our council email accounts, but the. Light in the dark features from the Lewiston Youth Advisory Council have been just fantastic to read and see. So I'd encourage everyone, if you haven't haven't had a moment to look at this yet, they brought some much needed levity to. These times that we're in.
All right. Okay, nothing else on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Clement, seconded by Counselor Jelinez. Call the roll.
Counselor from word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
And word three?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you all. Have a good evening.